Judge Glaser, it looks like we have all of the attorneys for the case as well as the court reporters. I can bring them in whenever you're ready.
Hi, Morgan, you can start bringing them in.
You should be waiting on Ron Weiner from Litton Law as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll say it again when Mr. Weiner joins us.
I'm also seeing Stephanie Johnson, who's a co-personal representative is here. Is she supposed to be brought in as well?
Yes.
As well as Zachary Dickinson.
I'm not seeing Zachary Dickinson right now.
He was.
Let me give him a call.
In the meantime, once again, good afternoon, everyone. Should we just wait a few minutes? What's your pleasure? We really can't do that. Oh, here comes somebody.
I just spoke with Mr. Dickinson. He's getting help plugging in the Zoom information now.
Okay, great. Thanks. We'll wait a few more seconds, a few more minutes.
Okay, I'll bring them in whenever I see them.
Okay, great. And counsel, just so that you know, this is the first consent judgment I've done as a judge. I've done dozens as a lawyer, but that was a long time ago. So I am going to ask you to help me if necessary as we go along here. I mean, I have memories of doing consent judgments, but it has been a while. So please forgive any mistakes that I may make in the process of this hearing. But I'll call us to order momentarily.
Zachary Dickinson has been brought.
Great. Mr. Dickinson, we see your name up. Here you come, almost.
I believe I'm on now.
You are. You are indeed, and welcome, and welcome, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Glasher, and I'm the Court of Claims Judge who will be conducting this hearing today. Let me call the case. And I would like everyone in our Zoom room as we go around to identify himself or herself. But first, let me put the case name on the record and the purpose for this hearing today. The case is Zachary Dickinson, personal representative of the estate of Zakira Johnson, deceased, and Willie Williams and Stephanie Johnson, co-personal representatives of the estate of Gladys Johnson, deceased, versus Todd Matthew Moyer. It's Court of Claims case number eighteen dash zero 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 two six one dash MZ. We are here this afternoon to have a hearing regarding the estate's motions for entry of a consent judgment. Counsel, would you please introduce yourselves and the clients who are here with you today?
I'll go ahead, Dan.
The Figer law does not have his name up there. It would be very helpful if everybody would put their name in, or I could do it, or somebody can do it.
Yes, Your Honor, Don Dawson, on behalf of the estate, as co-counsel on the estate of Glass Johnson. I have here Mr. Willie Williams, who's one of the co-PRs, Your Honor.
Okay, Mr. Dawson, are you? Yeah, I see your name. Okay, do you see it now, Ms. Roberts? Maybe Ms. Roberts?
I see it now. That's very helpful that I didn't just say Figer Law.
Okay, great. All right, well, Mr. Camper, you're next, in my view. So maybe you should just introduce yourself.
Ah, yes, Chris Camper, Litton Law, co-counsel for the estate of both, I guess.
Both being?
Both.
Well, go ahead.
For Zakira Johnson. And.
Gladys Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Weiner?
Hello, Judge. Ronald Weiner appearing on behalf of the estate of Zakira Johnson with Chris Camper. And we are also appearing as co-counsel for the estate of Gladys Johnson.
Okay. All right, who is going to conduct the inquiry and of whom? Oh, and we have one more person. I'm sorry, Ms. Veltting. I apologize.
No problem, Your Honor. Tara Veltting for defendant Todd Moyer, who is not present with us today. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let me go back to my other question. Who's going to conduct the questioning or to make? How many of you will be making presentations, counsel?
Your Honor, I can make a presentation for everybody, and then if the court thinks that we need further individual inquiry, we could do that.
Okay.
Okay. I'll indicate at the beginning for our clients and for the court that we're seeking to enter the consent judgment that was agreed to by all the parties at the time of facilitation, where we agreed to enter a consent judgment for nine point five million dollars as to each estate. The purpose of today is to enter that judgment as we agreed to and to also ask the court to approve a partial payment, which is the extent of Mr. Moyer's GEICO insurance policy, which is twenty thousand dollars per estate. We have provided all of the personal representatives with the motion to approve, which outlines all of the costs and fees and probate necessary to bring it about. And to understanding our clients, the personal representatives are the only surviving interested parties of the two estates. And it's my understanding that our clients have agreed to the parameters as we have set forth in the motion to approve. So I could ask Stephanie Johnson, have you reviewed the motion and all of the expenditures contained there?
Let me stop you for a second. Would you like your clients placed under oath, or are you happy to do this without placing them under oath?
I suppose our clients.
It's up to you. I don't care. So whatever you want is fine with me.
Under oath, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Ms. Veltting?
I would request that it be under oath, please, for the benefit of my client in particular.
Ms. Johnson, are you able to administer an oath to the witnesses?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Ms. Roberts. I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts, are you?
I thought you did.
I don't know why I said Johnson.
Okay. So I'm administering an oath to Ms. Johnson and Mr. Dickinson, or one or the other?
Let's go ahead, Mr. Dawson.
And also Mr. Williams, Your Honor.
Okay, all three.
Mr. Williams, I don't see a Mr. Williams.
Right here.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do it collectively, Judge, or just one at a time?
Let's do it one at a time, Ms. Roberts.
All right. Okay, Mr. Williams, I'll do you first. Would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so forget. Ms. Johnson, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so forget.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Dickinson, would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so forget.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, and thank you, family members. Mr. Weiner, do you wish to continue?
Sure. Ms. Johnson, would you please state your full name, please?
Stephanie Evazeline Johnson.
And what is your relationship to the decedent Gladys Johnson?
I'm her sister.
And have you reviewed the motion to approve and the consent judgment, which have been sent to you regarding the hearing today?
Yes, I have.
And have you reviewed the expenditures that are proposed to be coming out of here for costs, attorney fees, and probate?
Yes, I have.
And you understand what we're asking the court to approve here?
Yes.
You understand that by entering into this settlement here today, that you're giving up the right to have a judge or jury decide this case?
Yes.
Okay, and but you do understand that even if a judge or jury decided this case, the most that GEICO would be responsible for is the limits of their insurance policy being offered here today?
Yes.
Understanding all those things, do you feel that it's in the best interest of the estate and reasonable to have the case settled for that amount?
Yes.
Those are all my questions of Ms. Johnson, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. I have no questions for Ms. Johnson.
No questions from me, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Veltting. Mr. Dawson, would you like to interrogate your client, please?
Be happy to, Your Honor. Mr. Williams, will you tell the court where you live, sir?
Nineteen one four nine Gable.
Detroit, Michigan.
Detroit, Michigan.
That's all right. And you heard all the questions Mr. Weiner just asked of Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
And all your answers, will they be the same as what her answers were, sir?
Yeah, it'll be the same as my daughter.
All right. You've read this. You understand the dispersments, and it's been explained to you, correct?
Yes.
There's further been explained to you about the judgment that is being entered today, the amount of nine point five million dollars against Mr. Moyer and on behalf of your daughter's estate, and that's not been decided yet. That's all I have, Judge.
What did he say?
Said yes.
Okay, Mr. Williams, you're satisfied that at this time you wish to settle the case for the amounts that are set forth or stated in the paperwork?
He said that.
The judge is asking you. You understand?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
You understand and you're satisfied at this time that it's in the best interest of the estate to settle the case?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Ms. Veltting?
Just briefly, sir, you also understand that despite the consent judgments being entered for nine point five million, you understand the GEICO policy has a maximum payout of twenty thousand dollars per person, and you're still willing to proceed to settle the case, correct?
Yes.
And you understand it's a full and final settlement if the court approves it?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and who will question Mr. Zachary Dickinson?
Chris, do you want to go ahead, or you want me to?
I can.
Okay.
Mr. Dickinson, you are the father and the personal representative of the estate of Zakira Johnson, correct?
Yes.
You understand that there is an agreement by the parties to settle the matter for Zakara, Zakara, I'm so sorry, Zakara Johnson for nine point five million dollars. You understand?
Yes.
And you agree to that settlement?
Yes.
And you do understand that the driver of that vehicle, who was defending this case, had a policy limit of twenty thousand dollars per person regarding this matter?
Yes.
And you understand that the insurance company that covered Todd Moyer for this accident would only pay up to the limit of twenty thousand dollars to the estate of your daughter?
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear the representations by my colleague Ron Weiner earlier today?
Yes.
Did you hear the questions being asked of Ms. Johnson and Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think it's in the best interest of the estate of your daughter to settle for nine point five million dollars? And do you believe that the court should grant our motion to approve the settlement and dispersment, the policy limits being paid by the insurance company of Mr. Moyer?
Yes.
You were provided the itemization of the attorney's fees and costs in this matter before today, correct?
Yes.
And you were able to review those?
Yes.
Would you like the court to approve and allow the distribution of those amounts?
Yes.
You understand that by agreeing to the settlement, you give up a right to go to trial in this matter?
Yes.
And at trial, you could have been awarded nothing at all, the same amount or more, possibly?
Yes.
But you think it's in the best interest of the estate to put this matter to rest at this point and accept the partial settlement of the twenty thousand dollars from the defendant Todd Moyer in this matter?
Yes.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Veltting.
Nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. The court has reviewed the statement of costs that have been the statements of costs that have been provided and finds those costs to be reasonable and necessary. The court has reviewed the proposed attorney fees to be imposed on the settlement and finds the attorney fees to be reasonable and necessary. Family members, let me just say that I've been the judge in this case now for close to a year. And this case is a terrible, terrible tragedy, and and this case is a terrible, terrible tragedy. And not only did you lose beloved family members, but the second tragedy here is that Mr. Moyer had such limited insurance coverage. And, you know, speaking as, not as a judge, but as a, but as a driver and as a citizen of this state, I would wish that the mandatory limits for coverage for all drivers would be far, far higher than these, than this GEICO policy. And I also hope and I know that you have a second case that remains pending in the Court of Appeals. I hope the Court of Appeals finds something in that policy that I didn't. So I'll leave it at that. But I wish you all the very best. I'm sorry that we had to put you through this today, but I, I'm glad and I'm hopeful that this is one part of this terrible tragic story and terrible tragedy that we can, we can put to an end today. Does anybody else? So the court does approve the settlement in every aspect. The distributions of costs and attorney fees are approved, and I'll sign the proposed order that was submitted, and the distributions that you have proposed to family members also are reasonable and appropriate. So the court will approve them. What have I missed, counsel?
I think you have it covered.
Anybody?
Good memory.
Yeah, it comes back. When you've done it enough, it comes back, right? Okay, well, I thank you all for being here. I, Ms. Roberts, I don't think we need, unless somebody else needs a transcript of this, the court does not. The court, as I said, I will sign, I have the paperwork right here. I will sign it today. I will scan it, and our clerk should be able to get it to you hopefully by the end of the day.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay.